I'd actually like to call the meeting to order. This is the annual district meeting in Elkhorn area. First, so calling out meeting to order and I am going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Trullin and Mr. Tabai.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. On the back table, as you came in as a member of our annual report, we send this out each year and I won't spend too much time going through this. It's there for you to take a look at the hard copy, but I did want to acknowledge and give a huge thanks to Brenda Harris, who spends hours putting this together on a yearly basis and she does a great job compiling the accomplishments, the achievements, and acknowledgements of the staff and the students from the school district throughout the year. So again, a great big thanks to Brenda Harris for all of her efforts and the staff that also forwarded and put together their accomplishments. You can see we are celebrating our gymnastics team this past school year, which brought home the state championship, which was our first state championship, I believe, since the late 90s. So congratulations to them, but there's many academic accomplishments and staff accomplishments listed within the annual report as well. And this time I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Bill Trullin for the budget presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tabai. This evening is part of the budget presentation. I'm going to cover three probably main areas. The first one is some basic facts about the Elkhorn area school district. I've done this in previous years and like to update the data and share that term, the annual meeting. We also put together some comparables for area school districts just to see how Elkhorn compares in a number of different categories. And then finally really focus in on the 24-25 budget and the proposed tax levy. The first chart is a line graph that shows our actual enrollment and it's really, it's a history chart. It goes back to 1990, covers over 30 years. And you can see the growth rate that we had here in our school district over that time. We have not seen increase every year, but almost every year in terms of some growth. 2011 is when we started the 4K program. So that's where you see that additional line pattern going up. So this represents, it's called our head count. So this is students that are actually attending our school district. So who's resident students that are here and also open enrollment students, which are not resident students that are attending our school district. It's worthwhile to kind of take a look, a little deeper dive in terms of what makes up some of those numbers. And this chart shows the net open enrollment for our school district. And it goes back to 2006 and you can see kind of how those numbers have changed. As part of this process, there's a state aid adjustment. When students come to us from another school district, we release some additional funds. This year is about $8,600. And that's for regular ed and for special ed is about $13,400. Another way of looking at the growth and change in enrollment is comparing our resident enrollment to our open enrollment. And you can see through the purple line here, the change that we've seen in our resident enrollment that actually is going out all the time. However, that seems to be somewhat overshadowed when you look at our overall head count because we've seen increases in open enrollment. So our net enrollment as a school district is actually going to increase during that time period. So if you look at where do we get our resources, there's really three main funding mechanisms for the school district. The annual tax levy, state aids, and federal dollars. And state aids is a big portion of our funding. They come through a couple of different mechanisms. Equalization aid is the largest chunk or largest state aid that comes from schools across the state of Wisconsin. There's a number of categorical aids. Then I mentioned the open enrollment and that's where you see that 13% dollars as well. Federal aid is about 70% this year. We still had some ESSR dollars that we were using. Those will be pretty much exhausted. And typically before we had the ESSR dollars, the federal share is probably closer to about 3%. So how do we spend those resources? Well, the largest chunk is for personnel. A little over 75% is really for staffing, teachers, support staff, administration. All of that's rolled into the personnel costs. About 6% is for supplies and equipment that we have each year to operate the annual school district. Transportation services, about 5%. Utilities maintenance, another 5%. About 3% is open enrollment out. So this is the dollars that leave the district when resident students attend another school district. And the remaining 5% is purchase services. So this would include programs where we send students to outside the school district, maybe special ed services, or we bring in special ed services either through a CISA or another private source to provide instructional services. Long-term debt. I want to share with the public here, we have three different bond issues that occurred in 2015, 16, and 2020. In 2015, it was $20 million that the public approved through a referendum. The interest rate on that, the net interest rate was a little over 2.3% and the borrowing was for 17 years. School districts are allowed to borrow up to 20 years. Because we had such favorable interest rates, we reduced the actual years of the loan to reduce interest cost for the public. This referendum included renovations in addition to all three elementary schools. We also did some renovations in every school in terms of special education, including the middle school. And we did an addition to the high school as well, along with the technical education improvements we made here at the high school and also with the cafeteria. In 2016, there was another referendum. Again, that was $22.9 million, the interest rate you see there, and that was a 20-year loan. That included improvements here at the high school, which also included some expansion in terms of the tech ed area. The improvements with the parking at the middle school, the purchase of the property between the middle school and the high school, the development of Market Street, the agility center, the improvements we've made in this building, particularly in this room with the auditorium, and the construction of the greenhouse. And then in 2020, there was another referendum and that was for the old City Pass school and renovating that building to be the option disciplined learning facility. And that one, because the interest rates were so competitive at that point, we did actually just a 10-year loan. So the combination of those at the time, you add those up, was about $49.8 million in net loan there of debt. One of the things we look at on an annual basis is, is there an opportunity to maybe pay off the debt or refinance the debt? With interest rates the way that they are today, doing any kind of refinancing doesn't make a lot of sense, especially with these rates that we had at the time. But one of the things we look at is we've accumulated some interest within our debt service fund over the years along with some additional levy. And looking at those monies and trying to pay off some of our debt, some of our debt becomes callable and the bond issues now are becoming callable. So this is one of the things that the ADHOC Financial Stability recommended that we take a look at. So one of the things that the school board has already approved back in May was to pay off some of our long-term debt. So that included about $3.8 million that we paid off in May. As part of that, they were able to reduce interest payments or future obligations by just over a half a million dollars. So those would be direct savings to the taxpayers. Our debt load at this time is about 0.92%. And state statute limits the amount of debt we can have to be no more than 10% at any one time. So we're well below that figure. The other thing that we have that we look at in terms of debt, and it's really an outside source, is Moody's Investment Service does a rating of our school district updates every year. The latest was February 2024 and we maintain a rating that was called AA2, which is a really nice rating for a school district our size. AAA is the best rating. AA1 is the next, and AA2, then AA3. One of the things that they look at is they compare our school district, how it's changed over the last three or four years, to school districts and entities that are also rated similar to ours. So the one of the key things we look at is the leverage or the debt ratios that we have. And for our school district, that has been going down, going down not only in our long-term debt, but our closed OTEP, which is our benefit program for retirees that retired some years ago. So as of 2023, our debt load is about 6.7% of our operating budget. The average for other entities rated similar to ours was about 12.2%. And if you want to see a little more information on long-term debt, you can have page 34 and you're going to need to look at the state of the organization schedules. Equalized value. Equalized value is the market value of all properties in the school district. And this is determined each October by the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. And this is again to represent fair market value. And you can see how this has changed over time after the housing crisis in 2008. We saw some kind of reductions, but the last couple of years has been significant increase. Last year, the increase for our school district was over 16%. I think statewide and countywide was close to about 13%. So those are large increases. And what's important about equalized value is when the state distributes dollars, state aids to school district, they do that based on what they call the ability to pay. And that's defined by property values here in Wisconsin. So the larger you have your property values on a per student basis, the less state aid that we get. And that's just the system. There's been discussions of changing that, it's saying both property values may not be the best way of recognizing the ability to pay. Maybe issued the income tax or some other mechanism. Those are always discussions that occur. And then this week shows our historical and projected, what's called a tax rate. So that takes that valuation of the school district and divides it by the actual levy that come to a rate per thousand. And you can see how that's changed over time. Back in the early 90s, the state imposed what was called the revenue cap and began to fund school districts at a larger percentage, close to two-thirds of funding. And then also created some other restrictions in terms of compensation. When those three things came into play, the mill rates across school districts, including Elkhorn School District, began to go down. Other way of looking at our tax levy is how much has our levy changed over time? So this is kind of a 12-year look back on the actual percent change in our total levy. So this would include not only our operating budget, but our debt service and also our community service fund. And you can see from year to year, there's certainly some years went up, some years it went down. The referendums would have been in 2015, 2016, and 2020. In 2022, we saw a large reduction in state aids and that the difference under revenue cap formula becomes the increase of the levy. The average increase over this time period has been about 1.72% in terms of change per year. Comparables includes school districts, A12 within our school, in our conference, area schools, and some other comparable schools across the state. So the enrollment comparison includes Ashwadon, which is basically Green Bay, Burlington, the Forest, and Dan County, Delve. East Troy, Elkhorn, Lord Atkinson, and Alaska, which is over by La Crosse, Milton, and Whitewater. So if you look at these numbers, the Forest was largest school district and then that's followed by Elkhorn and Milton. Free and reduced lunch eligibility. Again, this is looking at the federal lunch program and the percentage of students that qualify for free and reduced for each of those area school districts. Per student expenditures. This looks at how much school districts are spending on a per student basis. There's a number of calculations you can do, it says per student, about. I like to use what the Wisconsin Policy Forum does. Wisconsin Policy Forum is a nonpartisan group that does a lot of studies of government entities here in the state. It used to be called the Wisconsin Taxpayer Alliance. And they look at cost per student for actual students that are being served. So this would include our resident students that are attending our school district and open enrollment students that are attending our school district. And you can see by these numbers, and probably the key thing is they vary greatly. And if I was to expand this and listen from a statewide basis, you would see numbers, high numbers, maybe 24,000, 25,000 per student and numbers that are lower than Elkhorn. And the reason for that really goes back to when revenue cap came into play, which was in 1993. And whatever the spending level of school districts were at that time, pretty much blocked them in to that ratio in terms of their spending compared to their neighboring school districts. And Elkhorn has always been a pretty frugal school district. So as a result of that, we are a little over that. Equalized value per student. I mentioned state aids are distributed based on this figure. So you'll see these drawings, value per student is one of the highest. And then one of the lowest is Milton. So when you look at the percentage of state support, you'll see they're inverse here. Because of that, East Troy is one of the lower funded districts at the state level in terms of state aids. And Milton is one of the higher school districts. Fund balance. Fund balance is kind of our operating reserve. So this would include not only cash the district has available to meet immediate expenses, but also any receivables that were going to be received in within a reasonable time period. The reason we need a fund balance is because the timing of when we receive state funding and when we receive even the local tax levy doesn't match up with our expenses. So to avoid any borrowing, borrowing money now is much more expensive than it was a few years ago. We want to maintain a strong fund balance. This also helps for terms of rating for bonds or any other bonds the school district would have. And sometimes they call us a rainy day plant, so really it's for unanticipated expenses also. And then here is our tax rate for $1,000 in equalized value. So you kind of see how we compare with our neighbors. And in this one, I included Lake Geneva, which as you know, is a junior high school and then a joint school district. So they're combined here if you live in Lake Geneva. And you can see how they change across school districts. I think Elkhorn is maybe third from the lowest here in terms of our 2,003 actual tax revenue. Budget highlights. The state of Wisconsin always has a two-year budget cycle. So these items include what was included in the state budget. We're in the second year of that biennial. Again, there was, for the first time, you had some increase in what was the revenue cap. The revenue cap controls the amount of resources we can spend as a school district. And it's a formula that looks at the per pupil amount times our enrollment that gets to this cap number. Once you know the cap number, this illustration is a little over $31 million. We wait until October to find out what our state aid is. Once we get that number, the difference between the cap and the state aid, state aid is the maximum allowable tax levy for operations. Now considering over time, this increase in the revenue cap, the per pupil amount, has changed drastically. Over years, back in 93 and really going forward for the first 15 years, this increase per year was tied to the March-to-March change in all urban consumer price index. So once March came around, we pretty much knew what the increase or change was going to be each year in terms of per pupil. The negative number, grab bars, is going down. That was when Act 10 came into play. All school districts were required to reduce the revenue cap. And then since that timeframe, you can kind of see, there's a couple of different colors here. Rather than increasing the revenue cap, the state decided to require per pupil increase. So you see a combination of, again, it's a different way of funding schools, but you'll notice that the pattern is very different going forward. So the removal of looking at the increase based on consumer price index no longer is in play. It's basically dependent on each budget cycle that the legislature and the governor decides to approve. Budget highlights. One of the recommendations or second recommendation that came out of the ADHOC Financial Advisory Stability Committee was looking at reducing our expenses as a school district. And for the first year, they were looking at $1.25 million and then the second year, another $500,000. So to meet that goal, we looked at some reductions in efficiencies in student transportation, reducing through attrition several instructional positions. Also looking at a couple of support staff positions and then reorganizing some services in the custodial area. We also have two fewer instructional days this year than we had in previous year or next year that we had this year. So there's some savings in participating utilities and transportation and a number of workdays for school year staff, support staff. We also put in place some energy improvements. And as part of that, we're anticipating we won't have to increase our energy budget next year. We froze on supply and equipment budgets, increased student consumable fees from I think $25 to $30. And then we're anticipating additional student enrollment, about 50 students. And the areas we're seeing most of our growth has been in our college and career academy program and our options blended program. And all of our school districts have seen increases then over there. And they're also doing some reductions in fund aid, our community service. We reduced the community resilience outreach position and then added a small cost for the community health board there. And then we also looking at one-time costs we had for putting him across this year. And we won't need those dollars for going forward since they're basically startup costs. And then just some additional staff adjustments as we have filled positions and some new people that we do bring into the district. We're looking at some savings in terms of salary benefits there. In addition, we have several other adjustments. One of the things that school districts can do is we have students that move into our school districts that have special education. They have IDPs. And if their IDPs require some additional services, some of whom may be a one-on-one aid, some of them may be additional teaching support, we can increase our revenue gap for commonly that day. We need to demonstrate though that we're matching the needs that a student has when they arrive here at our school district. Because of the growth we're seeing again at the career college academy and options, we're looking at hiring staff position in both of those. And then one of the legislative items that came out of the state budget is called Act 20. And that's a new state reading law that school districts all need to implement. And there's a training requirement with that. So what we've estimated the cost would be about $25,000 for implementing that state mandate. General fund and overall highlights. The board approved increasing compensation this year for all employees to match up with the CPI just over 4%. Last year was about 1.4% for groups or for some groups that was actually frozen last year. Student transportation, 3%. We changed our health insurance program this year. We started that in January and went to a self-led program. Before we went to that program, we were looking at rate increases of about 35%. So so far, that program from fiscal standpoint seems to be matching as well with our estimates. And for next year, we're assuming about a 4% increase. The ESSR funds I mentioned earlier, those will be gone. Our total general and operation budget, including special ed, will be increased about 1.4%. With that, we still have a delta of our difference between revenues and expenses of just about $3.4 million. And as I mentioned earlier, we are able to pay off some of our long-term debt. Overall, we're looking at student population this fall, just over 3,500 students, 455 full-time, part-time staff, and a total gross tax levy of $22,921,728, 2.42%. And this chart kind of shows the comparison from last year's levy to the proposed levy. And you could see the increase, 2.42%. We're assuming that property values would go up only about 2%. In reality, it could be much more than that. And then if it does, it does reduce the mill rate. However, in reality, if the levy is going up a large percent, that generally will be reflected on people's tax bills. So the 2% should reflect closer to maybe growth that we'll actually see new tax base within our school district. And that concludes the budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Trullin.
Sure, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Anything that Mr. Trullin presented? Or need any further explanation on anything?
Bill, wait a minute. Do we have a dollar amount of how much we saved by switching insurance? Is there any way that...
That's a correct question. Looking, waiting to get our expert report on what that's going to look like. So it's hard for me to give you an actual number, but it's looking, I mean, we're seeing, you know, it could be even, you know, $800,000 kind of dollars. So, but that's then off the 6% that we're assuming the increase. So our health insurance, you know, in terms of what we budget, it's about $5,500. So we need $800,000 reduction on that. So so far, it's looking promising, but in reality, we also know there's a number of claims that have been processed in the system and that's going to take a while. So I'm trying to answer a question, but I don't get all of that. It's a great question.
Hey, Bill, from that estimate, what we're looking at was 35% to 39% increase if we didn't switch to the structure, which that would have purposefully priced in here to money help increase in health insurance costs. So not only are we not seeing that 39% increase, it's looking like we may come in around $1,000 under what our head budget was set by the government.
Anyone else? Are we taking questions from the audience at this point or just on board members?
If you have a bigger budget.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that had a question regarding what Mr. Trullin presented?
We have positive feedback from the staff on the switching all insurance. Would anybody like to comment on that? Is it a good, bad, different? Talking about dollar sense, but do the staff have a...
I think it varies greatly depending on who the medical provider was and the system and the structure. And it is a different, you know, insurance is a processor of things. And so there's different groups to jump through depending on who they see as their medical provider in that system. They were working the key sound. We did structure it and set it up with the intention that nobody would have to switch their medical providers and so forth. I would say that initially there were definitely pickups within that structure and figuring out how to, you know, who is, who is our, you know, the third-party structure who's making the payments for, you know, ants, which we have a balanced billing partner to work through the negotiating process. So overall, I think Taylor's, our Taylor Rick, our HR supervisor, set up a fantastic job of helping people work through. Someone is there, you know, engaged and reach out. But I would say it is a significant change from just going from a single provider, or the health insurance, which is what comes with a broad network of other providers.
Okay, seeing that there are no other questions, I'm going to close the budget hearing. And we're going to move on to the annual district meeting. So I'm going to call the annual district meeting to order. And the first item that we need to do is to elect a district meeting chairperson. So entertaining a motion to elect a district meeting chairperson. Is there a second? Does Mrs. Lively... Does Mrs. Lytton agree to be the chairperson? All right, you're welcome to come up and. Oh, that's right, sorry. Yes, so we'll call home, please.
Mr. Andre. Mr. Dayheart. Eric Gordon. Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Faust.
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yes.
Mr. Spero.
Yes.
Thank you. So I see you're sitting this evening. Thank you. First on our annual district meeting agenda is the school district.
Um, our treasurer for the elementary school district. Of course, we have revealed we have seen some of these numbers before. Because I'll be reporting on the budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. All this information is available in the provided extract starting on page fourteen. The largest fund of sixty-four point eight million dollar budget is the general fund, which is listed first. The total general fund revenue was forty-six million ninety-six thousand one hundred nineteen dollars. This is broken down further by category. The largest portion from state budget, they should get seventeen million two hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars, or thirty-seven point four percent. The pie chart of general fund revenue can be found on page twenty-one. On the revenue portion of general, are the general fund expenditures, total of forty-six million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand fifty dollars. Expenditures are broke down again by category on that page. The largest of the expenditures was wages at twenty thousand four hundred ninety thousand one hundred one dollars, or fifty-one percent. That chart can be found on that page twenty-two. Further information for each fund, such as special projects, that service, and food service, among others, on that page, it's sixteen through twenty, and each is detailed in the same format as the general fund. And the other portion of the budget that I would have liked to point out, Bill already did, was the early payment of the long-term debt which is found on that page three. If any questions about any particular fund or anything else regarding the budget, please come to the other. Mr. Trump.
Okay, next, we have the establishment of salaries, travel reimbursement, and redeem fees for the support members. And you can follow along on page eight, so we're. To accept the treasures. Looking for a motion to accept our treasures.
Jason Tadlock moves to accept the treasures report.
Is there a second?
Adam on Jay seconds.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the treasury report as given. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Portion passes. Again, next, we have the establishment of salaries, travel reimbursement, and redeem fees for school board members. Suggested resolutions on page eight. The first is salaries and reimbursement of school board members. I'm still concerned it changed forever. So I'm looking for a motion, and I would like you to read it.
Just a reminder that only the electors are residents, and all the other areas of the school district.
I don't. I will ask that you state your name and read the resolution as we said in page.
Lisa Decker, I move that the following salaries, travel reimbursements, and redeem fees for school board members be approved for the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ellen Hawley, seconds.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the following salary, travel reimbursement, redeem fees for school board members for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. President, eighty dollars per board meeting. Vice president, perks and treasuries, sixty dollars per meeting. Members' salaries, fifty per meeting, travel reimbursement for school business and the I R S allowable amount. And committee meetings are thirty dollars for zero to two hours and forty dollars for two to four hours. Standboard meeting rate for over four. And then those salaries be paid only for those meetings attended. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Portion passes. Second suggested resolution B is the levy of the school tax. And this needs to be read per, exactly as it's written. Go again, and then someone say their name and read it.
Mr. Weitzel. Commitment of school tax. I move that there be a levy, a school tax assessment against all taxable property within the Alcoa area school districts in the sum of not more than seventeen million one hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-three for the general fund, six hundred and two thousand seventy-six for the community services fund, and five million one hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred ninety-nine for the debt service fund, for a combined total of twenty-two million nine hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred twenty-eight to operate and maintain the school system and to finance the debt service of said system on the basis of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school district budget presented earlier in this meeting.
Is there a second? John Henderson.
Been moved and seconded to levy a school tax assessment against all taxable property within the Elkhorn Area School District and the sum of not more than seventeen million one hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-three hours for the general fund, six hundred and two thousand seventy-six dollars for the community services fund, and five million one hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars for the debt service fund for a combined total of twenty-two million nine hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars to operate and maintain the school system and to finance the debt service of said system on the basis of the nineteen twenty-four, twenty-five school district budget presented earlier in this meeting. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Portion passes. And our last resolution is I'm going to motion to suggest the annual meeting time and date for two thousand twenty-five.
Mr. Weitzel, I need that the annual meeting begin at six P M on July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
And a second? All right. It's moved and seconded that the annual meeting begin at six P M on July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?